Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite, welcome everyone to the work session tonight. Board members take time to review your June 12th agenda for Monday's meeting. And then from there, we'll just turn it over to Trevor and the administration to cover the work session.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. We will begin with budget cuts. I wanted to give you an update. We have, all the budget cuts are in effect and we have resolved all of those cuts either through attrition or placement into a like job. So, all of them have either been placed in a like job or we've had enough retirements, resignations to cover the cuts that we needed to resolve the budget. We only had a couple that were offered jobs, but they did not take them. But I can say that we offered everyone jobs. Wanted to talk to you about a hybrid position that has arose out of this. You'll see some of those folks Monday night being acknowledged. And I'm going to use Bethel Elementary as an example. If you remember, Bethel, all the lead teacher positions were cut to a half and principals were given the opportunity to resolve that on their own. Bethel Elementary also had a half assistant principal, as they have for many years. It was shared between Bethel Middle and Bethel Elementary. The creative thinking of our principals, in some instances where they had assistant principals and a half assistant principal and a half lead teacher, they have combined that position. And so, we've been calling them hybrid positions. They're half assistant principal and half lead teacher. The really neat thing about these positions is that they offer the ability to execute administrative duties like teacher evaluations, like student discipline, but also then still serve the role and purpose of the lead teacher. This did not occur throughout in schools where they did not have any portion of an assistant principal. Some of the principals combined that with teaching responsibilities as well as serving as lead teacher for the school. So, just wanted to point you to that hybrid position, which has evolved out of budget cuts and they've, you know, kudos to our principals for taking lemons and making lemonade. So, proud of them for that. Any questions on budget cuts?
Dr. Putnam, how many, how many schools chose to do that lead teacher position full time? They had to come up with the money from Title I, is that correct?
That is correct.
Did all of the elementary schools choose to do that?
All but Bethel Elementary.
Okay.
They chose to combine it with their other half of an AP position. So, they have one full stand-up position.
Okay.
And the rest chose to go and support the other half of the lead teacher position with Title I funds.
Okay, thank you.
What would those Title I funds, what would they have been used for otherwise?
They hire Title I teachers. They do tutoring, remediation, all different types of things with those funds. Sometimes they buy materials and supports for kids that are at risk. But Title I is designated for at-risk kids. And so, the principals are given an allotment of money for that and they decide how that Title I money is used. They work in conjunction with Lisa Thompson, who is, who also vets or approves the spending. Ms. Barker and others have a look at, you know, how those dollars are being spent to make sure we're in compliance. One thing I will add, you will see another position Monday night. We, with Ms. Barker's help, because she's done some of those, or at least one of those positions and worked heavily with the other, we did collapse two directors into a singular position. And that, that person will be presented to you for consideration Monday night. And it combines our federal programs person, which was Lisa Thompson, who has resigned and is relocating due to the mill closure, with Carol Fox's secondary position, who is retiring. So, we combined those two positions. You'll see that person before you also Monday night as a result of collapsing two director positions into one at Central Office.
So, all the positions that you are going to cut or to combine into one have been done at this point?
Everything, all the positions that were planned to be cut or reduced have been cut or reduced. And we're fortunate that attrition allowed us, some of those were, well, a good many of those were resolved through attrition. Others of it, we lost it in the wrong area, but we were able to offer a like position in another area. For example, a teacher assistant, their pay is commensurate with some of the 12-month positions we have in clerical, or 10-month positions we have in clerical. And so, we were able to offer them, it is a different position, different kind of position, but it's like in pay, like in months of employment. And so, we were able to offer them employment opportunities.
Thank you.
You said some of those we offered, but they didn't take. How many of the people, so they're basically leaving the system at the?
Yes, there are two of those.
Just two, okay.
And, you know, attrition's still occurring. There might be something else that comes along that they like better or is more suitable. And, you know, I don't fault them for not taking the position. Sometimes it's about location, sometimes it's about type of job, sometimes it's about a likeness for the school, they dislike the school. All very good and valid reasons, but for whatever reason decline other jobs that we offered.
Do we know from Raleigh when we will hear about the budget and finalized?
Well, your guess is as good as mine. We've got budgets passed in as late as November and sometimes they've never passed one and just told us to operate off the budget we have from the previous year. What I'm being told, I know that Senator Corbin did pass a budget item through from the Senate side into conference where, you know, the two chambers conference over items. I know that an item in, in there to support us, to stabilize our funds and our budget for the coming years due to the mill closure is being heard in conference. It's my understanding from him that that item will be discussed, or was discussed this past Tuesday and that a final vote could be coming as early as next Wednesday. And what that will do is, you know, the cuts would still have, would have had to have taken place, but hopefully, depending on how the money is allocated and earmarked, we will spend in accordance with its earmark. But that will help us in covering additional cuts that would be forthcoming and give us the latitude to evaluate that more thoroughly as we go through rather than having to eliminate it on the spot.
Is there any way of knowing how many students from the mill closing that we're going to lose? Like, at what point, enrollment?
That's a great segue. If y'all are done with, with budget cuts, that brings us to our next item. Are we good with budget? Okay?
I think we're ready.
All right. So, the next item you'll see is community needs assessment. You have in your packet a copy of a survey. This survey was used, it's a, it's actually a replica or exact copy from the Pilatex case study. That was a plant closure like or similar to the Canton Mill. And so, one of the things that, or lessons learned from that plant closure is you really need to survey your community to figure out what the needs are. And so, that's why I've placed that survey in your folder so you can look at, at those, at the questions asked. You'll have the, you know, tonight and through the weekend till Monday night to consider that and make sure it's something that you're comfortable with, the question that you're comfortable with. The questions are pretty benign. They are really just trying to figure out what each household's situation is and what their needs might be. The survey would actually be housed on the Town of Canton's website and bolstered or supported by Ed NC, who's been involved in many of our activities during the mill closure. And the survey results will be live so that all of us, all of us being me, me and the school system, the mayor in the Town of Canton, and the county manager and the county at large. So, just so that we can kind of figure out what those needs are. Are they medical needs? Are they educational needs? And that will help us assess the impact of the mill closure. In conjunction with that is a 10-year forecast proposal. You'll see it also in your pack. I think it's titled Numerics. That's a company who assisted the elements Burlington School System when they had a plant closure. And the purpose for that, that one's more specific. That one is focused on Haywood County schools, although it will be a look at the community at large, you know, the community as it relates to school numbers and students that are actually in our schools. This Numerics company would actually conduct the research and compile and put together a model that we could use for budgeting in subsequent years. But they're, they're able to make a 10-year look or a 10-year forecast pretty accurately. Numerics comes highly recommended from retired superintendents. Ms. Barker and Mr. Hanes were both on that call as they talked about Numerics and the people that worked for them. And I believe that the, this company came within 25 students of accurately predicting what enrollment would be 10 years down the road. And so, they're a pretty reliable and reputable company. And so, you also have that proposal from Numerics to consider. Here's the really good news. Between the county and Ed NC, it will be at zero cost to Haywood County schools through philanthropic dollars and direct payments from the county. So, we're much appreciative of that. This is information we need. As y'all well know, the budget is extremely tight. So, while we may need it, we could not afford it. Even at that, it's 20, $20,700, I believe, something like that, not to exceed $24,000. But that's not a cost that we would have to inherit at all or contribute to. So, we're very grateful for that as well. And again, it's just garnering more information that we can use in budgeting and in consideration. They do offer other elements that we may want to consider. So, we don't, we wrote a grant or wrote for a grant to the Dogwood Health Trust to pay for this on our own. Luckily, county and Ed NC stepped in and paid for it for us because we need it now. We need this information now. And the Dogwood Health Trust awards their grant in October. The recipients of those grants wouldn't be known till October and that's too late. So, this gets it off the ground and running. But if we were to receive the Dogwood Health Trust grant for this, this work, we could apply it to other portions that Numerics is able to conduct. They come in and do geo-surveys. They can look at all the space and all the land that you own, all your current infrastructure, the age of it, where investments are needed and where investments needs to be minimized. And they can give us a capital look as well. And I think it was another $13,000. But I'm not going to spend that unless I come to you first. And we don't have it, so I would wait till we receive the grant and then approach you with it at that time. That information can wait. What cannot wait is the demographic information.
Since the funding's already sort of been secured for this, is this something, we still need to approve full board that we want to do this? Or since it's, is it something that's going to go ahead and be done anyway?
Yeah, I would like for you to approve it even though on Monday night, obviously, we can't take any action tonight, but I would like for you to approve it for the simple fact that it is involving our students and potentially using some of our student data. All of the student data that we would use would have to comply with our acceptable use. Otherwise, we would not release it. So, there are guidelines there. We can't just give them anything. We, you know, we have to comply with our own acceptable use. But I think since it involves student data, I'd like for y'all to vote yea or nay on it as a show that you're comfortable with this work being conducted with inside the proposal there, so.
So, this proposal scope of service. So, I mean, it says right here, "The objective to study is determine the impact to the closure of local business on Haywood County Schools' membership." So, explain to me again what this, how this study would help Haywood County Schools. Explain it just a little bit better because I'm not, I'm not really understanding. Yes, it may forecast, okay, we're going to lose 200 students. So, then if it forecasts that, then what are you going to do with that information?
Well, we, if we knew that with more certainty, we would adjust the budget and not wait till it had happened and then begin downsizing. Otherwise, we would approach another funding gap like we did this year. Having that information in advance, we can make smaller adjustments over time. You know, I mean, if you ask Trevor what his inclination is, you know, it stands to reason with a mill closure of that size, our ADM is going to shrink. We're going to be a smaller school system. But I don't know that with any certainty. This information would inform me a lot better as we plan our budget and as we think about, you know, improvements to schools and those types of things, where do we need to be investing our money? And so, I just think it's valuable information that I could bring back to all of you for consideration. It would inform the work that I'm trying to do on behalf of all of you and, and just give us a better outlook or picture for the future.
But now, you say, you, you said that they've got another, I guess, scope of work that would help, help capital, capital money, they can look at building, so on and so on. And I may be forgetting something because I've been, we've been through a lot, but it seems like we did that at one time with some company, probably about five years ago. I, I may be wrong.
Okay.
I, I may be wrong, but it seems like we may have paid a company to sort of look at the building infrastructure or something. It may have been longer than five years. Everything runs together. But you're saying that's a totally different price than what, that's a totally different scope than what this is?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's not included in that proposal. If that was something building and grounds, or even the board at large generated an interest in, then I would bring back to you a proposal for that type of work.
I think, I think it's important that we get, get professional information and find out because ours is just a guess and there's, there's just probably considered an educated guess, but getting that information by November the 31st, I think, will be important so that you can plan and, and plan accordingly. And then if, if we get it wrong, we didn't just make up the numbers anyway. So, at least we're, we're trying to do it in a, in a educational way, I guess. So, educated guess, anyway.
And at no co, and at no cost.
I think that would be good.
That's even better.
Yeah, the, yeah, the no cost. And where was the cost coming from again?
So, Ed NC is a publication that represents school systems statewide and they have philanthropists that are ties with multiple philanthropists and they're able to come to the table with money. And the county also has dollars that they have available to them. And the two of them contributing together will cover that cost for us so that we don't have to wait to see if we receive the Dogwood grant.
Grant. Now, the survey, now how exactly will that be pushed out if, for some, if Monday night we approve because you're wanting us to prove it too? How will it be pushed out?
Depends on what they're looking for. What I can most certainly tell you is there will be a survey that goes probably through our network that, that supports and helps the efforts of this company that's trying to do the work. We haven't gotten that far in, in the details yet.
So, basically, this survey goes hand in hand with the data that this company needs, is what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
So, are you still applying for the Dogwood grant?
It's already been applied for. We just will not...
Even though the county's going to pay for, for that, you're going to apply for it to do the other assessment?
Correct.
Capital assessment later.
Well, we had already applied for it, not knowing when they would award that money. And we, we've learned that they will not award money for people who's applied for it till October. And so, if that money comes in, you know, we will use it as we said or wrote the grant for and say, here you go, Ed NC, there's your money back and, and county, here's your money back. You know, we got the grant. And then, the, the grant was written for the full package that included the look at capital needs in, in a 10-year look. So, we could, we could execute that. If we were to receive the grant, we'd have funds available for that. I'll just, while there's a pause here, I'll just tell you kind of what I've been working on. So, the first phase was let's see if we can get help from, from the county, and the county did. The second phase was to see if we could get help from the state. And we, we have applied for that and we do have a budget item now in conference at the General Assembly and we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope that money comes through. Those two were first because of time restraints outside of ours. It followed that of the General Assembly and approval of the budget and approval of the funding formula. So, that's why those were first. The next phase is what we're entering into now. We need an evaluation, an assessment that can inform us as we move forward. And then the third and final phase, we're seeking dollars to hopefully brand and advertise our school system. And so, that grant with the help, again, of these two to my left here, we're, we're trying to obtain money through philanthropists to fund branding and advertising of our school system, just to get the word out in whatever form a professional would advise us.
That's great news.
You know, I'll express, you know, support for that because as we move forward, we've got to make sure that we're prepared to take care of all the kids that stay here or that are here, that are not in the system, and try to get them back in the system. And so, I think that, that the more we can do it in an educated way will be good for, for the system and for the children.
And it, you know, it may not work out perfectly, but we've certainly partnered with reputable people who've been through this before. And it's more information and more likely quality information than we have right now. So, those two items for consideration, they will be agenda items for your consideration on Monday night for approval. Again, no, no money exchanged, however, given that it's, has an impact on our school system. It, it has a study that involves student data. I wanted y'all to have it and get your blessing on it before we did any of this work. All right. Any more questions for me? All right, Mr. Hanes, if you'll take over.
All right. Board members, first up for me this evening, I've got a couple policies. You all had asked the policy committee to look at Policy 4300 and the regulation that goes along with that, as well as Policy 6125, which is the administering medication to students policy. First, I want to touch on the student behavior or the student code of conduct, that policy and that regulation. You had asked us to look at that. Policy Committee met, we reviewed it. Policy Committee felt that that policy was sound and that it was good, as well as the regulation. However, in looking at that regulation, and the regulation kind of goes through the different offenses, what class they are, so to speak, and then for the first offense, the max could be this, and the second offense, the max could be that. And what Policy Committee had really talked about and, you know, what, what we need to do, what we're going to push through group alike and have our principals work on is just making sure that our discipline grids are not only aligned with that regulation, which I believe they are, but also to make sure that they are aligned with one another so that all the elementaries are the same and all the middles are the same and all the high schools are the same. And, you know, that way, if you have a kid that does one thing at, you know, one school, School A, you have a kid that does something, School B, the dis, the discipline should be very similar. Now, you know, there is principal discretion in there because there are certain circumstances that change and tweak that a little bit, but most all of them have a range, you know, one to three days ISS, for example. So, it's going to fall in there for that first defense, for whatever it is, no matter what school you're at, if you're in middle school, no matter what school you're at, if you're in high school, if that makes sense. So, again, we're going to push that through group alike and have them work on that and something that they're going to work on and do yearly, so that every year, they kind of come together, they talk, hey, how, do we need to tweak this? We had this happen this year, you know, we'd like to do this and work together. And then that way, they're all uniform. So, probably something that we'll work on in July. For the next one, the, the medication policy, which is 6125 administering medicine to students. Again, Policy Committee in meeting on that one, they felt like that policy itself was sound. However, in talking, you know, we felt like there is some tweaks that we can make just to kind of shore up the administering process and to make sure that we are as thorough as possible when administering medicine so that accidents, you know, don't occur. And there's a human error, of course there is, but just to be as thorough as possible to try and cut that down. And Nurse Kelly Martin Hicks came to Policy Committee and she kind of went over that process with us. And then, you know, we spitballed some ideas at her and she's going to go speak with the nurses and talk to them. And then, we'll probably address principals as to how those changes may occur and just some ideas, you know. You know, it was the child's face, you know, a little picture of them on the medicine bottle, or maybe having a whole form that the parent fills out, having a picture of the pill on there, as well as a picture of the student slid down in a gallon-sized bag with the medication all zipped in there together so that it's all kind of in one piece and you can check the medication, you can check the child, maybe have the student, yep, say their name and their date of birth when doing the medicine. So, they just repeat that back to you and you check it, you know, just to make that a little more, like I said, thorough process there. And also, you know, giving our people that are administering medicine a more secluded or quiet place to do it because a lot of times it happens in the office, which is where it has to happen, but maybe we can do it to the side somewhere just so there's not so much commotion and a distraction to where, you know, a mistake is less likely to happen.
What kind of training are the principals? What kind of training are are the principals or a lot of times it's the front office staff that's giving the medicine because there may not be a nurse or somebody at that school that day or something. So what kind of training are we requiring of them? Are they going through? And how often do they have to do that in order to to be able to administer that medicine?
Well, we do that once a year. Our school nurses, they train. We try to keep that really small, maybe two people, maybe three in a bigger school. But, you know, generally it's the same person every day, but you do need to back up. But our nurses train them at the beginning of year. There there's a sheet they sign off on that they've been trained. And, um, generally that is the office staff. And some people that have a full-time nurse, it is the nurse. So that is complete.
All right, thank you.
No, we don't have, no, this was brought up at the commissioners' meeting. We don't have nurses in every school every day. How beautiful it would be if we did. So that was the nurses' responsibility always to administer administer medication. But are we able to we able to get the information of how the how many nurse, how long the nurses are at each school? Like, are we able to give that to the commissioners so they can see, um, that we don't, like a lot of the schools don't have a nurse, but maybe one or two days a week? Could we maybe give that information to them that they might see the need, the greater need, that they might be able to help with that, that there be nurses more accessible in the schools? That's not put on our staff solely, it's put on somebody that's a healthcare person?
And that is a, you know, partnership with the health department where, you know, we have funds that we contribute and they have funds they contribute. So I'd be glad to get that information together.
Never hurts to ask. All they can tell us is no.
In a normal medicine situation to a child, is it the nurse giving the child the medicine most of the time? Or are they pushing that off on that that front office staff more?
Depends on the school. River Bend has a, uh, nurse typically one day a week. If I misspeak, Ms. Barker, you correct me. Um, if you're Waynesville Middle, you've got a nurse four days a week.
So when they're there, they're giving the medicine?
Typically?
Yeah.
No, not typically.
Not necessarily.
No, they're most nurses in most school nurse case, they do not give medicine.
They do not give medicine.
That's the reason why we have, that's the reason the health department, the school nurses train the administration to do that. Because you really, in a situation, a school nurse, they're there for multiple.
Sure.
Multiple reasons. But they, and I would I would dare to say ninety percent, if not more, they do not give medicine.
For what reason? They don't want their liability?
Well, I don't know whether it's liability or if that's just pretty much how they set up. But once the contract that we have, they train administration to do that.
It's because they're not consistently there?
That's that's the main part.
Yeah, and that could be mostly the main part.
The number of nurses that we have. I mean, I'm I'm sorry, I'm not trying to put you on this, but but like, just ballpark, you didn't have to.
I I think we have eight. I think that's right.
Yeah, it's not.
Like, um, but think like Kelly Martin, who's, you know, the nurse director supervisor, she's full-time at Waynesville Middle. She gives all the medicine at Waynesville Middle. Okay. But like, if they're not there, what Mr. Kirkpatrick's saying, then you really need the same person giving it every day. That causes even more issues.
That puts a lot of pressure on front office staff that's paid minimal amount of money for a huge liability. And going back to what Ms. Marsh was saying, I mean, if we could, I know we're poor, but holy cow, if we could get school nurses.
And I think, uh, Ms. Barker pretty much hit it. And that may be more of the reason why they don't give medicine is obviously school nurses are not there every day.
All the time, yeah.
So if they have a trained one or two people.
They're in the routine.
That they're they're there all the time, then that that would be more, it's taken, yeah, it's giving the liability to us, so on, so on. But, I mean, I I don't know how the workings of all that happens. But that's probably more of a reason is that there's somebody there with the school system all the time, not a school nurse.
Yep.
On some school nurses in our high schools, their offices aren't in the office. So if they're not there, then the medicine's somewhere else. And then we're having to leave, you know, if you're in a school, leave that desk to go give kids medicine. All, you know, that's an ongoing thing. So it kind of has to be housed in that office. So that's part of it, too. And I know as a principal in the elementary, and the person wasn't there to give medicine, and I would get, I would sit there for five minutes. I would check, recheck. I mean, it is, it is a lot of responsibility. So if you're not doing it all the time, you're not familiar, you're going to pull that envelope up, you're going to look at that medicine box. I mean, because you're just like, you're not doing it every day. So you're extra, um, you know, careful. So it is is stressful for sure.
And I think Ms. Marsh probably hit on every, hit on a good topic about the county commissioners now. I've been on this board a while. We asked for school nurses and school psychologists many years ago. I don't think we got an extra one. I think we may have got a school, an extra school nurse, but I think a health department is the one who did it. Uh, psychologist, I don't think we have. But how the mental health of kids are nowadays, and we've got three people still has kids in school, when I say in school, in public school, how everything is mental challenge for these young kids. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't get the stuff at home, they shouldn't get discipline or whatever. But the mental health, we all know that all home places are not the best place for kids. Some of them has crappy home life. School is a place that they shouldn't have to worry about anything. And I agree with you. When it comes to school nurses and social workers, uh, it is a mental state throughout the United States, how the kids are ju- just so pressured and the mental health.
I know it's on the commissioner's radar because when we went to the public hearing about the budget, they asked questions. They said they had had phone calls about, Kevin Inslee said, we've had calls. He was asking asking questions about how many nurses do you have? Do do you have to cover all that budget? How much of that do we cover? How much do you cover? So maybe this is a great time to start making them more aware of, I wish I would have got up, I later thought, I wish I would have got up and said, I've had so many teachers who've come to me and said this, the mental health issue in the schools is is a huge weight on them right now. That maybe this is a time that we make them more aware of the need for more nurses and more guidance counselors, social workers, whatever that looks like. Maybe they, maybe we just need to talk to them about the need that's out there because they may not know.
Well, you actually hit another good point is the Haywood County Social Services or whatever, they actually see a lot more stuff. Now, the our administration, we may see some some of the stuff. But that side of the county sees what's going on in the in houses and in homes and with our kids. So, I mean, it is a hand-to-hand thing that we need to have the county and the state government to go hand in hand with these kids. Because like I said, I mean, me and Jim just graduated our daughters. And I'll just tell you, my daughter, she is great. She is great. But some of the pressure that they went through starting in, our kids actually was in the third grade. They was actually one of the first classes that third grade, you had to pass a test to pass third grade.
The reading.
The reading. And it's just so much pressure, but going hand to hand. But one thing I do want to say is every state, federal, and county government always says, it's always about the kids. If it's about the kids in our school system, you show me that it's about the kids. Give us what we need.
Amen.
And I'll just, to piggyback on that, you know, I met with Nurse Kelly this week, actually, and Tammy Quinn, and they were talking about how their jobs had changed where there are so many kids. A lot of times, they're the first line when they are having a mental health crisis. They come to the school nurse first. They could have developed a good relationship with them. Or there's a lot going on, you know, in an office, and they go to that school nurse. And so a lot of times, they're handling things there that they haven't before. And, you know, we talked a lot about that. And they said, we love being that person, you know, we might. But again, um, you know, I do agree that that's always been a need. It is very, very scary. We've got kids that have diabetic needs. And, um, that pisses our people, you know. It always always felt better, you know, when my nurse was there. But I think I think that's important to think about, too.
Well, hopefully the policy change is going to help a little bit.
I hope so. I think it'll shore it up for sure.
With the liability and shoring it up to make sure everything's in place.
Anything we can do just to help out and make it more thorough, I think, is is a good thing.
Goal's always to eliminate the possibility or potential for human error.
Exactly.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
And the the actually, the MOU between the health department about nurses, it will be on the agenda Monday night for you to approve. So you can read through that, um, and see, you know, if you have any suggestions or anything about that.
Okay. Um, last thing for me here is a, um, coaching, uh, non-staff coaching changes. And so it was brought to our attention by one of our current coaches. Um, he got his taxes done and his, the person who did his taxes said, you know, you should be getting a W two, not a ten ninety-nine. And so he had contacted Ms. Swanger and I, um, about that, and we weren't exactly sure. So we talked to, um, Ms. Garland about it. Um, she went and looked up the IRS code and stuff, and it did say that all coaches for schools are supposed to be employees. Um, so we we spoke with Mr. Hines, who talked to, uh, Dean Shatley, the attorney, who talked to Dr. Putnam, and we all kind of got together and chatted and talked about it. And sure enough, um, there was a change in twenty eighteen, um, I believe it was, that basically, again, said that all coaches are supposed to be employees. So the non-employee coaches that we've had, that we've contracted to, um, now need to be employees, that we actually enroll, and they are employees of Haywood County Schools, and they go through the whole process. So we went, um, and we made some changes, uh, for the fall. So contracts were in, and we're actually having them redo all the contracts again. We made changes to them and changed the employee coaching contract to a staff coaching contract, and then the non-employee coaching contract to a non-staff since they're not full-time staff. Um, but then that way, they can both be considered employees because we're not calling one, and one is and one isn't. Um, and so those are coming back in, and we will be going through that whole employment process with them. Um, you know, so instead of just having a background check, for example, it's the whole nine yards, it's the drug test, it's the health certificate, it's everything. Um, so it is a longer process. Um, but it is more thorough. Um, and and the good side of it is, is if they coach for us regularly, so say they're coaching this fall football, um, and then next fall, they also do football, their time won't have lapsed, and they will not have to go through the whole employment process again. They'll just had to do it that one time. Now, if they wait longer than a year, they would have to do it again. But, um, you know, a lot of our coaches are regular seasonal coaches. And so, uh, you know, like I said, we just wanted you all to be aware of that. If you see it, if somebody asks you about it, that's that's what happened. And once we found out that there was an issue, we were quick to make sure that that was the case and fix it.
This has no impact on volunteer coaches, does it?
It does not. The volunteers are still just volunteers.
Now, the non-employee coaches that we have right now that we're pretty much saying are employees now, is that changing any kind of insurance, any workers' comp, or anything for us as a school system? Because you're putting them in as an an employee.
They would have to go. They don't know any benefits. Uh, they're treated like any other part-time employee. They're considered part-time. So they would not earn benefits, but we would have to add them to the workers' comp list.
Right, okay. And that would obviously make our workers' comp go up? Or do we have a certain amount that we cover?
It could possibly make it go up, um, if you added enough employees, but there is a range.
Okay.
We don't, I don't think we have enough coaches to make a significant difference with it.
So it is a possibility it could cost us money in the long run, yeah.
A small percentage, yeah.
Well, small percentage now is tight. Well, thank you.
Well, the cost of doing all these more.
Just the the man-hours.
It's going to be a more cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, the man-hour.
Yeah, the, the, um, background check is twenty-six dollars. The drug test is forty if we, if it's, uh, doesn't have to be split and sent off. Uh, the health certificate, the employee pays themselves. And and we've got those down to forty dollars now for a health certificate. So we've negotiated with some providers.
Well, I mean, it's not going to be a great, big cost, but it will be.
It will be more, yes. I- in the past, what we've done with them is a simple background check.
Right.
Twenty-six dollars.
Well, we were doing it wrong for all those years. So we have to do it this way now, correct?
Yes, if they're not employ, if they're not an employee. I mean, you could, you could always put it always, you could always put it out there.
It's a, yeah.
You can always plead ignorance till you know better.
Pat does that all the time, see?
I think we've done that for like five years. I've been since two thousand eighteen, we've been doing it already.
Well, it.
I can't do it anymore.
It was a, it wasn't a law that cha, it was a, an IRS rule that changed. And so it wasn't like we were violating a law, but we were violating IRS rule, I guess. Uh, but even if it makes everybody feel better, even Dean Shatley wasn't, he had to go research it and figure out why they were saying this, you know. It wasn't it, it's such a unusual thing. It wasn't like a whole lot of people knew it, you know, where you switch from contractor to to employee.
That one accountant.
That that accountant knew it, and 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 kudos to them.
Yeah, you can plead ignorance till you know.
Everybody good on those? Any new questions?
Yeah. I think it's a good thing that, uh, that we get the background checks and get them as, as you call it, smothered and covered and all that. So I think it's a good thing. So, um.
Ms. Barker?
Okay, I guess, Ms. Barker.
So I am very honored to announce we have had another one of our staff members accepted in the Principal Fellows Program, and that is Matt Golden at Bethel Middle School. And so we are very excited for Matt. And with that, there's a memorandum of understanding that we have to sign. And I just wanted to make sure you're good with it. You know, we have Maggie King, who is currently, you know, serving as an AP, and she went through this program. I did, too, many, many years ago. It's changed a little bit. But basically, the first year, it's a two-year program. The first year, he'll still continue working at Bethel Middle. The second year, he'll be placed in an internship wherever Dr. Putnam, um, you know, wants to place him for that second year. And they pay for his entire salary. So that is paid for through the Principal Fellows Program. Great opportunity, um, through that. The only hiccup with that is, is that they don't pay for his health insurance. So we, um, y'all agreed to do that for Maggie when she went through to pick that up, that health insurance cost. So I would just ask, you know, if that, I just wanted to run that by you. Is that still okay with you? And I don't think it's necessarily anything you have to approve, but, um, are you still good with that?
I think that's a bargain.
Yeah, well, that's a pretty good deal.
It's great training for him, too. I hate to lose him in the classroom, but he's a he's a good one. So I just wanted to run that by you.
All right. And then, uh, no other questions for Ms. Barker. I'll cover the last item. Chairman Francis regrets not being able to be here. He had a work-related emergency, so he couldn't be here. Uh, he was initially slated to cover a discussion on lottery. Uh, so I'm going to fill the gap for him. Um, you know, there's been a good bit of discussion, you know, anytime you start cuts or, uh, budget cuts, any amount of spending i- in any sort of way. cuts, any amount of spending in any sort of way, anywhere else, draws the question. And I think it's a fair question of, you're cutting because you don't have money, yet you're spending on other things. I did share an email with all of our staff, doing my best to explain it. So, you know, for the viewers we may have, or what have you, and for all of your edification, although I'm pretty sure y'all already know this, wanted to talk just a little bit about lottery funds. I'm commonly approached about lottery funds, and why don't you use those? Lottery funds are earmarked for instructional classroom projects. That's it. Nothing else. It has to be projects that are instructional in nature and for capital projects that are used as a classroom. We do use lottery funds to replace the ball fields. And you say, well, now, wait a minute. You just said it has to be a classroom. Well, I can show you on a pretty routine basis where Canton Middle and Wayneville Middle go to use those two fields. They use it constantly, especially when it's been rainy for a lot of time. It's a large space where they can spread out. Our PE classes use those very routinely, and it is a legal and authorized expenditure. But what it can never be used for is the operating budget. And I think Chairman Francis is in the process of scheduling, maybe the guy from the Lottery Commission to come up, so that, you know, it kind of validates what we're saying, and you can, the general public could hear it firsthand. But there are very strict rules with lottery. That aside, I think it's important to know just how the lottery generates. And for a single year of collecting, let's say, we don't spend not one red cent of lottery that we collect in a year, we could anticipate anywhere from $500,000 to $600,000 total for the year. Doing rough numbers, if we spent none of that on anything, and we saved it for, you know, 20, 30 years, we might get to the place where we could afford a new school at current rates. So, it's just not, it's not a huge generation of money. And I think that's the other misconception that maybe people have about it, is it's this big old pot of money. And, you know, I'm happy to, or Mr. Haines is happy to at any time. If someone wants to review that, we can take them to the website, we can show them our ledger, where we are able to show those funds. All of this is a matter of public record and can be researched and found. We're happy to show those numbers and how they're generated at any point in time to anyone who has a question about it. Kind of in conjunction with lottery is also state sales tax, you know. And so, that sales tax is our other pot of money. And yet again, it is only earmarked for capital projects. It's a little less stringent, because it uses the broad sense of the word "capital", which can be devices, which can be equipment, which can be buildings and classrooms, whereas the lottery fund is just for instructional areas or spaces. The state sales tax is for capital projects of any kind, to include devices and equipment. And it generates at about $6 million a year. And so, again, you know, if you save that for a very long time, you might eventually get to a place where you could afford, you know, a whole new elementary school or a whole new high school. So, I just wanted to share that information. Chairman Francis wished he could be here to share that information. I think he's gonna line something up with a person from the Lottery Commission. And again, I will compel anyone who is in disbelief just to come in. We'll be happy to show it to them. The state sales tax, you can go to NCADOR, North Carolina Department of Revenue, and you can see how, what money every county receives and how that money's generated. So, you know, there, I wish there were some buried cookie jars or mason jars or whatever, but, you know, that we had at our discretion, and we could use it in any way we chose. But that's just simply not the case.
I think it's really hard to make that clear to people. I've done that on a regular basis lately, but your email was so well-written, the staff, I wish that could be printed in the newspaper. I wish, like I thought, if the general public could read that. It was so clear and concise, and we have nothing to hide, and here's how this money can be spent, and here's how it can't be spent. I don't know if there's a way, put it out there for more than just the staff to see it, but it was very well done. Thank you for doing that. I think it helped them to understand better, the staff that didn't.
You know, talking about what Marla's saying, and then taking it a step further, you know, us redoing Bethel Middle's field, and then the new property acquisition, if it goes through, there's a misconception on that, too. So, I'm sure they're getting it also, but we get it quite a bit. Maybe that's something that you can explain as well about grants being used for specific reasons, and the bus garage, you know, us having to move off that property, and things like that, that we're not cutting positions to afford a new bus garage, or we're not using lottery money to build a new football field with AstroTurf. So, just some misconception there that I think can get straightened up.
Well, and I'll just go ahead and speak to those now, for, again, for anybody who would want to listen. So, in regard to the land that's in consideration, and again, we're just in due diligence and looking at it, our due diligence period's about to expire. But the whole reason for land exploration is because we have funds available to us from emergency management for flood mitigation or elimination, AKA this room and the building next to us. And so, you know, yes, we would use some of our state sales tax, which I just described, can only be used for capital projects in conjunction with North Carolina Emergency Management money. It's money that we would not have at any other time in our history, and if we don't use it, it is going away. And I think, you know, it's a smart use of that money, because maybe, just maybe, we would not have to deal with flooding if nowhere else but at least this location. It'd be just one less thing to contend with. You know, there may be land or exploration down the road as we consider flood reduction or elimination at the fields at Pisgah and Canton Middle. Who knows? But, you know, as we have opportunities like this present themselves, you know, I think it behooves all of us, especially our students and being good stewards of tax dollars, to take any funds that are available to us and put them to work to eliminate future headaches. And so, that's the property. That's the big property deal. The other is, you know, we've had discussions with the General Assembly and others, trying to garner money for some other flood-related things, and we don't know how those will materialize. We just don't. That's why we can't say explicitly, here's what we're doing. We have to wait till the funds materialize. And so, that's all that is. And again, it's utilizing North Carolina Emergency Management money and possibly some of our state sales tax dollars that are generated. That's a very healthy budget. As a matter of fact, we asked, could any of that money be used in the operating budget? And the answer was absolutely not. So, just, they do not cross over.
Dr. Putnam, before we switch gears, can you touch on also, I mean, we talked about eliminating some employee positions because of budget? And correct me if I'm wrong, but we roll around to August, and class sizes K through three, is this correct? If they get over a certain number, that could possibly get us to the point where we would have to hire teachers in certain instances, correct?
Yes, we have state law or class requirements that we have to abide by. For example, first grade, no more than 19. I'm looking to my left here, Ms. Barker's obviously the expert in this area, so just nudge me in the gut here, and I'll shut up and let you talk. But, you know, the class size requirement used to be that you had to have an average for the district in first grade of 19, which meant, well, you might be over one at, you know, at Matterbrook, and you might be under at Canton, North Canton. And so long as your average was 19, you were okay. That is not how it reads now. It is 19. You may not exceed 19. And so, in some of that bill language, you remember, I was asking for class size flexibility, because, you know, if we end up over by one student, we're gonna have to pay for a whole nother teacher for one student. And I just, I don't think that's a wise requirement. But it's not our requirement, it's required of us, and we will comply, so.
Thank you.
What's the other grades? Do you have that right off the top of your head, what the requirement is? Like, it's 19 for first grade?
Yeah, it's 20 for kindergarten, and then second grade is, I think it's 21. They're all different now, yeah. I'll look and see, yeah, 21. But the thing, what Dr. Putnam said is accurate, and Brooke, you chime in, because Brooke helps me do this. It's very confusing, because you can, what we do is we allocate, you know, teachers, you know, like, we look at like 19 in first grade. But there is still, we are so close to that now. We used to, you know, like, it's almost every one of our classrooms, we've got them maxed out, whereas, Dr. Bill would always say, don't worry about Jill, it's not gonna be close. And Brooke and I have watched that over time, like what Dr. Putnam say, we almost are over at times in our district, okay? The average, you cannot have any class over 19, period. That's the state law, okay? And so, your average has to be a little bit smaller than that, okay? So, it is, it reads a little different. So, see, we always go to 19, but our average is what has scared us a couple of times lately. But anyway, yeah, and when we pick up those teachers, that's also an assistant, you know, in K.1, and we have, you know, worked on that some, but that, you know, and then we're looking at trying to place those people next year and things like that, too. So, it's kind of crazy, but, you know, also, class size, I remember when it was 24. So, those have reduced some for those teachers, but the state just doesn't find, when I first started this, we had assistants in third grade, too, or, you know, when I was started with principalship. So, those finds of teacher assistants have dwindled from the state for years. And a lot of districts, you know, when we started looking at our TAs, and I hate that, and I feel like, but other districts hadn't had them for years, you know, very, you know, very sporadic the use of teacher assistants, so.
You had 40, and the average was like 20 in other places?
Yes. Do you have that, Brooke? Okay, anyway, we can talk about, but yeah, it's, yeah, we do have to watch it, and he has to sign off, Dr. Putnam has to sign off on that in the first couple of months of school, that that is accurate, or it says he will lose his job.
So, they kind of mean it. And I pay attention, so.
Sir.
Is that everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I have one thing. Please.
Go ahead.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Could, I know we'll probably go through it and building the grounds, but could you give us update? I had a question today about boxes being placed at the Pisgah. Football field, is all the last going, are we still hopeful of boxes, the whatever they was sort of worried about?
Yeah, all the boxes are in, or the cans, as they call them, the guts, we're still waiting on the insides, the fuses and whatnot coming, but they are supposed to be in this month, and to my knowledge, we are on schedule.
All right, so that's, the boxes and everything's being put up, just like we was told, or we had requested. Let's make sure everything's ready, so that when everything comes in...
Yes, sir.
It's not as simple as plugging it up based on be close to just...
Correct. Everything's being put up and ready to go, so when those last pieces get here, they can install them, we can flip a switch, and we'll be, we'll be good to go.
And the backup plan to the backup plan is potentially a temporary permit. I'll go ahead and put the pressure on Towne of Canton for a temporary permit.
I mean, I don't think it, it would hurt to start twisting arms right now and say, come on.
Is that the only utilities, just the electrical that we're still working on? Has the, like, plumbing and all that been secured and taken care of?
That's correct, yes, it is.
You know, the electrical has actually worked the entire time. We've just not been allowed until this past spring to use it.
Correct.
Legally.
With the temporary permit that I think has been shut off now, it went through, the temporary for the softball and baseball fields was up through the end of...
The end of the season.
Season, right.
Yes.
Personally, I do appreciate them being able to get the temporaries and get for baseball and softball, because that was a big deal for those kids and for those families. So, I think it's a good thing we got that done.
And soccer, and just for the record.
Yes.
It wasn't the first time we had tried the temporary permit route, just for the record. We tried many other times.
They were hearing it from a parent.
Okay. Anything else?
Can I say one thing about the class size, going back to Ms. Marsh real quick? So, for example, to use Dr. Putnam's example, you know, 19 is the maximum you can have, and I'll get Brooke to send this to y'all, in a first-grade classroom, but the LEA average has to be 16. Do you see what I'm saying? So, like, we allot at 19, 19, thinking, you know, a river bend or something like that, where their smile will make up for it, right? But, yeah.
Average has to be?
The average has to be 16. The maximum is 19. So, and I think kindergarten, I might have said it backwards, I'm not sure which one you asked, but kindergarten, the max is 21, and then second and third grade is 20, okay? So, in kindergarten, the maximum we can have is 21, but the LEA average has to be 18. And Dr. Bill would say, and I hope he's listening, he would say, Jill, don't worry about it, it's gonna be okay, you know, we've got these others. Well, Brooke and I looked at each other this year, and it almost wasn't okay, you know? So, it's not just that, you have to allow for the average, and the second and third grade is 20 max, and the LEA maximum average is 17 in second and third grade, so.
And with the fund balance what it is, at a critical low, we can't, you know, just let them hang around, so we have to be spot on.
Okay. Anything else?
A little pressure.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose likewise? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. We will go into closed session, there will be no action taken, and we will adjourn from closed session.